Oh hello everybody, thanks for coming out today. And thank you for joining us via the internet, however sweet you the best, I know that's a big presence today and our growing and changing atmosphere. My name is Jimbo Ledford and I will be the host of today's Meet the Candace Forum. I'm a longtime resident and business owner in the town of Franklin in Macon County. I currently own and operate Jimbo's Plumbing and Altered Frequencies, the venue we're here at today. And through my involvement in local politics in recent years, I have learned that local government is part of our reality that we can absolutely help alter to suit our lives simply through involvement. Today, we hope to help spread this wisdom to other like-minded folks. Thanks everybody for being here. Alright, the format for today's event is that each candidate is going to be given a two-minute, uh, two minutes for an opening statement. I do have some, some answers and some opening statements from candidates that are not here today, but have mailed them in, so I'll read those in their absence. Uh, then we'll move on to the five questions. Each candidate that's here will have a minute and a half to speak on the question, and then you'll be given an additional one minute after the other candidate has had time to speak. Then you'll be, both be given two minutes for a closing statement. And afterwards, we'll have an open forum if we make it and anybody has any questions in the audience and candidates feel like they'd like to answer some audience questions. Alright, so we have with us today, our current mayor, Mr. Bob Scott, and our candidate Peter Moscow, who's running for one of the open town council seats. Alright, Mr. Mayor, would you like to start off?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll start off. First off, I'd like to say I've, I've had 17 years experience uh, in service to the town of Franklin and its residents and visitors. I am seeking another term and I've been fiscally responsible. I have taken some sides that were very unpopular with some people in the town, but I'm not beholden to anybody. I'm running my own campaign. I have not received a penny from anybody else, nor have I issued a penny. Uh, I figured that after being here for 17 years and serving the people of Franklin, if they don't know who I am and what I stand for, there's no point in putting out more yard signs and buying ads. So, I don't want to be obligated to anybody. So, uh, I twisted my wife's arm and I got a hundred dollars or so to run for, for mayor. But that's been my philosophy all along, is to be an independent mayor, not beholden to any special interest groups, and I certainly can promise you, I still will never, uh, do anything as the mayor, just because it's a special pet project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for answering. Peter, would you like to?
Yes. I've lived in Franklin 15 years now. I have lived in another world, in another place, and I tend to call it my sister city, or city, sister town, where I did come from. It's a handy how close that particular situation is to this one. However, after 15 years of being here, I've tried to be, get involved with town, with the town as long as interested in the planning board and things of that nature. The board is gracious enough to put me on that board six years ago, and I think I've done a pretty good job helping deliberate zoning matters as well as future planning. Learned a lot, learned a lot about Franklin, being in that position, which was very helpful for me to really actually do appreciate more what it takes to be part of his town and to be. I'm a former leader in another place and another time. Had tremendous success as, to do that. Um, a lot of accomplishments I have. I feel like I can really contribute to helping the town move forward in the future. I don't believe I know anything more than anyone else that I hear about anything when it comes to what they want. We all have different, um, different ideas. You'll never make everybody happy, and I'm sure that, uh, I can definitely attest to that, that I will not make everybody happy, but. I have one thing and, and I hope that I share in it, just with everybody is that, keep the town moving in the right direction, in a smart direction. I mean, and I do agree with Bob about pet projects and things of that nature. If it's not for the greater good, that's the first thing that I look at when we're deliberating. If it's not for the greater good of the town and the county, because we do reflect on what our decisions do reflect that happens in the county. I've learned that even more in the past three, four months from listening to people on Facebook about that. It's the past on the street. Well, I, look, I appreciate the time here and, um, if I was to be elected, then I would tell you that I want to hear everybody's comments. I always want to be in touch with people and go from there.
Peter, I apologize, I had a hard time hearing one of these, something you said. Did you tell me that you currently sit on a board for the town of Franklin?
I currently sit on the board for planning and zoning board.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Brandon McMahon sent in his answers.
He says, "I first want to thank you for hosting a Candace debate. It's awesome that you are using your business venue to host a political event like this, to draw attention to town issues and town candidates, and especially to bring it to an audience that might not otherwise feel welcome or inflated at local political events. Good for you guys, it's a great thing you're doing and I appreciate it." Secondly, I have to tell you unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to come to the debate on November 2nd. I already have plans to be out of town that day with my oldest son and my mother, and unfortunately, they're not plans that are easy to change. I hope you understand that while I appreciate the importance of what you're doing and the gravity of the upcoming local elections, that the plans I have with my family of all tickets that are already purchased and the kid and the grandma that are already very excited. Please understand with my apologies. We do understand, thank you, Brandon. It is agreeable to you however, if it is agreeable to you however, I will include in this letter my answers to the questions that you sent to us. If you choose to do so, you may share my responses as written in my absence. If you not, do not want to go that route, you can disregard the bottom portion of this letter, and I fully understand your decision either way. Thank you again for using Altered Frequencies as a stage for this political event. Sincerely, Brandon McMahon."
Brandon is a candidate this year, for one of the open town council seats. Mrs. McCray, who was running, opposing our current mayor, Mr. Scott, uh, had intended to come and sent this letter at the last minute, not the last minute, this was about three days ago she had a circumstance. Melissa, I told you I would participate in Saturday's forum, but because of a very tragic and unforeseen circumstance, I must attend a funeral that afternoon at the same time as your event. And Barbara has sent in some answers. Uh, David Culpepper, he's not running, we did reach out to the current candidates. We believe that it's, uh, it's nice to know who you might be electing, who they might be, who they're working with already. Uh, that dynamic seems like it'd be pretty important when you have six people up there, you kind of want to know what's going on. David couldn't be here today, uh, he didn't send an opening statement, but he does, he did send some answers, and we'll read those later. Oh, she did, okay. Alright, question number one. Peter, we'll let you go first on this one, it's pretty simple. What do you believe is the role of the town government?
Well, let's, let's look at it this way. Town government is our, is grassroots government for us here. It's the first thing, it's our quality of life issues that, that we address every day. I mean, on a national and state level, you are affected by everything. But, being on, being in, in, um, local, um, excuse me. Local government really does affect us again on an everyday basis. So, I feel that it's very important, it's very important for always to look at our community as a whole, that our, that the greater group, good always has to be taken into, into, you know, account when we're making decisions on, on the board. Quality of life issues, what are they? Taxes, right? Zoning. Um, future direction for the town with projects and infrastructure. These are the things that really do matter. These are the things that I'm all about and want, to make sure they're maintained and we don't move by, go by the wayside of not making sure that we steer the town, if you steer the, our business district in the right direction. I think these are very important. I think that's what the role of, of town government is. And, um, it's been an old saying that, uh, town government and village governments like that are just a step above student government, but, uh, I think it's more than that, it's just a nice joke. But, uh, it's very important that we deliberate properly with, uh, with decisions and always looking for the greater good in that.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Alright, I'd, I'd like to start out with saying what we're not. A lot of people think that, uh, and they, they will campaign, "I'm gonna run the town", or "I'm gonna run the legislature like a business". Number one, we're not a business. The first thing is, we don't give anybody a product. What we provide is a service. What we provide for you is for you, uh, to have services collectively by providing us with the tax dollars to serve each one of you. And, uh, that is what we are, we are providing a service. If you turn on your speaker in the morning and you don't have water, we haven't provided you that service even though we charge you for it. Your water, your sewer, your police, your fire, your streets, your sidewalks, that is what is our infrastructure. And if we don't take care of that infrastructure, I don't care what kind of town you've got, you're not gonna have a town. And so, this is what I am most passionate about, is making sure that we have the basics before we get into the things that would be nice but are not a necessity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Peter. I'm gonna read some answers that were sent in from, I don't believe this order should matter. Brandon says, number one. "I believe that the role of the town government is to steer Franklin in a direction of growth and progress. There are many things we can't do, but there are also many things that we can. And I feel that it is our responsibility to do what we think is best to allow Franklin to grow, attract new business and people, and keep them here as long as we can. I also believe that it is the role of the town government to be able to move in flux with the world as it is changing. Our small town is charming, and I don't want to see that change, but in some ways, the town does need to be able to evolve and look to the future. And I'd like to see the town be more open and flexible in making decisions that reflect a desire for progress." That's number one, from Mr. Brandon McMahon. This is answer number one to Mrs. Barbara McCray, she is the candidate for mayor. "The basic role of town government is to manage services for the municipality. In Franklin's case, these include water and sewer, fire protection, police protection, street maintenance, and management of public properties. In addition, the town has planning functions to allow for safe and orderly growth, and conducts other activities to promote civil goals for economic development, community health, recreation, etc. How much our little town government can do is limited by statute, budgetary constraints, and the wishes of the electorate. Overlapping jurisdictions can cause confusion, as people often assume town government is responsible for things that are actually in the domain of the county or state. Maintenance of state roads, for example." That is Mrs. McCray's answer to question number one, what do you believe is the role of the town government? Mr. Culpepper says that the role of the town government is to provide legitimate services that the constituents need and desire at a rate that is a good value. Making Franklin the best place to live, work, and play should be our adopted mission statement. There's an additional minute and a half for additional comment. Either you feel like you'd like to comment on that question since you've heard the answers from the other candidates?
I really don't, I just want to emphasize again that, uh, what we do is that we provide for everybody collectively those services they cannot afford as individuals. You can't afford to have the streets you drive to to work every day. You can't afford to have, like a police officer sitting there making you say. So, we all provide that with, and, and the way we do it collectively is by tax dollars.
Okay, thank you, I understand. We're gonna move on to question number two. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna read Mrs. McCray's answer first. Question number two. "The Franklin Town Government has spent thousands and thousands of dollars for outside sources to tell us what the town needs and how to get there. For example, the Whitmire property usage, the town land use plan, and the sidewalk plan. What is the current state of action regarding these plans, and how important do you feel it is to follow through on these plans? Mrs. McCray says, "I think the plans developed by expert consultants can be very useful. Sometimes a person from the outside with specialized knowledge and experience can see things we do not. Even if the plans themselves end up not being followed, they can shape the conversation and, and help us avoid costly and possibly permanent mistakes." Mr. Mayor?
Well, first off, I, I'll mention that I'm not a dreamer, I'm a planner. I believe in planning. You have to have a plan, you have to know how to execute that plan, and you have to make sure that that plan is sound. If you don't do those things, I don't care how many plans, how many studies you've got, gathering dust on a shelf somewhere, uh, you have to move on those plans. But you've got to remember, the mayor as himself cannot put those plans into practice. The council has to do that, and if there are any plans or anything that are not being acted on, it's not necessarily the fault of the mayor, because in North Carolina, if you have a manager form of government, the manager is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the town and the personnel. And basically, all I'm there for sometimes is just to break a tie.
When you say to break a tie, Mr. Mayor, can you tell us what you mean by that?
That's right, the mayor does not have a vote in a manager form of government unless there is a tie. And that's, that's the time by charter, uh, in our system of government inside the town, the mayor does not have a vote, as I said, unless there's a tie. A lot of people don't realize that, but now I can use the office of mayor to persuade, and I do that quite often, and make suggestions. But that, that's all that, uh, and then too, I, I pretty much keep regular hours so that I'm available for people to call, uh, question me, uh, I find information for people. Uh, I spent, uh, well, let's see, I think it was Thursday, no Friday, uh, helping people out with a water supply program, uh, problem. That's the type of things that mayors do, I want to be accessible to the public.
And we are a manager-type system, the mayor only has a vote in a tie, so the council makes the decisions.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alright, that's a perfect lead into the question for you. Mr. Moscow, I'm gonna read Brandon's answer first. "With regards to the Whitmire property, action needs to be taken. I can fully understand that citizens of the town can't help but feel like the studies done on Whitmire are a waste of money. Seeing as how they were paid for and then no action has been taken, I understand that frustration. As a taxpayer and a council member, I exist on both sides of that coin. All we can, all we have to do is use that data to determine some sort of informed beneficial decision, and the money spent on the issue won't have been wasted. I believe what happened however, in reference to Whitmire specifically, was that even with the data provided by the property study, the individual members of town council and the mayor weren't able to come to any sort of agreement on the issue, and it was tabled. I'm sure that everyone fully intended to come back around to the issue, but as you're well aware, that hasn't happened, and the can has been kicked even further down the road. When the new council is elected and seated, if I am part of that new council, I will do my best to see that the mayor and council address the issue again. A decision needs to be made on Whitmire, and the people of Franklin deserve to see some action taken of some kind after footing the bill for the usage study. As for the sidewalk plan and comprehensive use plan, those are still very much alive. Progress is being made on those all the time. It's just that Franklin doesn't have the money to do everything that it would like to do all at once, and the wheels of government turn excruciatingly slow. I can see how from the outside appears that action is not being taken in regards to those plans as well, but I assure you, in regards to those studies, things actually are happening, good things in my opinion." Peter?
Well, let's start with the Whitmire property first. I'm kind of glad we haven't done anything but yet, damage done. We got it, it's ours to do something with, so good. In the near future, that Whitmire property is gonna be a very, in my opinion, a very important piece of property to work with. Now, in the past year, I think a lot of things as far as planning goes for this town has been, um, turned up, talked about, a lot of issues. One for me, and I'm very passionate about, is the riverfront development, alright? Now, that, that property lays right there across the street of Highlands, directly across the street from, from the river area, or the River U project that we work for. Um, it's sad and it's unfortunate that a lot of people didn't come to those planning board meetings. A lot of things said like, "We were not, um, informed" or anything of that nature, and, well, town did what it could, the planning board did what it could to get people there. I sat for months on that board hoping that people would show up, and we only had a handful, maybe five people that have come to several different ones, have several different meetings. Um, that's unfortunate, but that says a lot, and maybe we can get a lot more people stirred up in the near future. This property is essential for helping us move and move forward in a good direction when it comes to, to the river district. I mean, are we gonna have a river district or not? I mean, we're gonna be talking about the mound in the next minute, and that has a whole heck of a lot to do with this whole situation. The overlay plan that we did formulate on the planning board and submit it back to the town, they seemed to like it, they wanted to discuss it, um, they weren't gonna act on it, but they wanted to discuss it. If it was that good of a, a deal at that particular board, I believe they might have acted on it a ton. I can't say I was not, I'm not part of that board, I don't know what people are thinking, but they, they put the kibosh on it for lack of better words, um...
That's a good, my, yeah.
Yeah, that, my, my belief is that we'll be using that, utilizing that property in, in a direction towards the River U, River District.
That's great, I believe that's a good property to have also.
Absolutely.
Can I just say one thing about the Whitmire property? Every study that we have done, or we have commissioned, has shown that the best use of that property is to public use, whether it be a park, bike trails, uh, interpretive, uh, whatever. All the studies have shown that we have that, it's paid for, put into public use. A lot of people say, "Oh, it makes a great civic center." Yeah, well, who's gonna come up with the $7 million to put a civic center on a piece of property the town, the town owns? Who's gonna give us what we have invested in? I just wanted to bring, make that point, that all the studies have shown that it's best put to public use.
Peter, you having a minute and a half if you want to talk some more on that?
Well, I, I don't tend to agree with, with that wholly. I mean, yes, I know that there have been a lot of suggestions that, that do indicate such, but there's a lot of ways we could be looking at this too. This, this, this property could be in better use, turned over to a private entity that will bring something, that we can guarantee, that will be bringing something to this town that is, um, of good use. Here's, for instance, for me, affordable housing, and I do not mean subsidized apartments. I'm talking about small units for, for people from the age 20 to 45 to maybe perhaps procure their own little slice of heaven. So, it would encourage, it would encourage people to move back into town, the tax base would grow, and we, and people moving in are gonna be the younger people moving in. Uh, we don't have to make this a 55 senior plus thing, so I think something like that would be a very good project for this property.
Yeah, I've seen some studies that say that too may go hand in hand. They have some apartments next door too of some public facilities, that the apartment people and the town people could both use, so.
Absolutely.
One quick point, there is no place else within the city limits of Franklin that's 14 acres of green space, period.
Alright, Mr. Culpepper says, "The town council seems to be in a holding pattern in regards to investing in livability matters. We are very good at providing fire, police, and water sewer, but I feel we're neglecting to focus on making the town a more livable, vibrant, and outdoor community that so many people desire. This conversation is ongoing though, and outdoor livability and recreation appear to be getting talked about more, if not already gaining traction." Okay, I agree. Peter, I just, I can't help but ask a question. You made, you made a statement earlier, as being part of the town government. Wait, you say that the, the decisions by the government are made by the people, but, and I can, and I can see the, the pain in your eyes when you say that you go through great lengths to put on these presentations and, and to get the public to come. And when there's not a lot of public input, what is done at that time with those decisions? Is the, is the decision left on the government like yourself to make, or are they tabled, or is that?
Well, in this particular situation that I am talking about, it was tabled because they, I feel that, uh, I don't know, I can't speak for the board. I mean, when we let, when that left our, when it left the playing board, I, as far as I'm concerned, implemented. That's what, that was what I thought. The town board decided not to, and I believe that maybe it's because you had a handful of people come, business owners of course, because when you heard someone's pocketbook, that's who's coming out first, alright? I, I believe that maybe they should have at least, at least wanted to send it back for more discussion. Our board tabled the idea as well.
So, the final decision was made by the small handful of people that showed up at that meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's usually, it's usually people that are, you're, you're gonna be hurting their pocketbook for, you follow the money, it's always the case, and it always will be. And I don't want to speak ill about our business owners in this town. I mean, it's tough to stay a business, we all know that. We're all in some kind of small business, I am, I know. Um, my, 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 my idea right now is to move forward with this, with that plan. Yes, will, will we have to tweak it a little? I think so. There's one big thing that I talked about when I was sitting there and no one wanted to, it fell on deaf ears. We need to provide some infrastructure in, within the town, within the, the, uh, river district to bring people, to change people's minds, to, to let them realize that their property is gonna be worth a whole heck of a lot more than it is now, sitting on, on, on a river that you can't see, or, or.
I understand you, good luck teaching forethought, but I understand. Alright, we're gonna move along to question number three. "If the town council were to re-vote today on the N'Kwasi arrangement with the N'Kwasi initiative, would you vote for or against the agreement, and why? Mr. Mayor?"
Well, if I had a vote, it would definitely been against it. The thing was mishandled from the first day. I told the two people most involved in bringing that about that they were opening a can of worms and they didn't need to be doing that. The town voted way too hastily, under pressure from, uh, two council members, uh, to proceed with the N'Kwasi initiative's idea. Now, here's, here's where I think we went wrong. We deeded over to the N'Kwasi initiative, a group that we know very little about. We deeded over the most iconic historic site in the town of Franklin, without seeing a concrete plan of why they wanted it, why did they want that deed? Uh, the deed belonged to the people. Uh, the schoolchildren and the residents of Franklin in 1946 raised the money, raised $1,300 to buy that mound so that it would not be bulldozed for a parking lot for a gas station. The tribe never showed any interest in that mound whatsoever. The mound was maintained for 73 years by the town of Franklin, every year. They took care of it, they grassed it, and then there was one unfortunate situation where they provided, where a herbicide was placed on the mound, and it was, uh, because they didn't know what it was gonna do. The mound turned brown, and the chief of Cherokee, at that time Chief Hicks, uh, he really came down on the town, and we offered a compromise with the chief. He would not accept it, he wanted nothing but the deed. And then later on, we have this group called the N'Kwasi Initiative and the K'ataupa Partners. So, this is where we are right now, we, we, we lost the deed, I feel like the town did. And we have maintained that mound, and I begged, I begged, and I'm just gonna call some names. Uh, the Main Street, the N'Kwasi Initiative, the town board, to let's compromise on this thing, let's let the town hold the deed for at least a year until we see some concrete plans of what's gonna change the face, supposedly change the face of Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, here are our candidate, Barbara McCray says, "I would vote for the agreement wholeheartedly. I believe, I believe the N'Kwasi project holds great potential to reshape an alien part of town in a way that will benefit the town, county, and region for many decades to come." Peter?
Well, first of all, I agree with everything that Bob said, sorry to say, and, and, but I do. I'm not, not sorry actually, but, but to be honest with you, the board definitely acted too, too history on this. It, it was, how could you possibly really think about the greater good if you, if you give this to a private entity? And now, it, it, it shows now what's going on here. The, the EBCI buys the property next door, or gives the money to buy the property next door. I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, they're the deed, they, they're, they're on the deed for the property next door.
Dan Zotto is that next door?
Yeah. Are they on the deed? Can anyone elaborate on that? Nobody knows, right? Okay. My point is that I'm very concerned that if, no, let me back up. For if one thing, if, if the mound stays the way it is and the property next door is bought for a beautiful museum of heritage for the Cherokee Nation, I'm all for it. That's wonderful, it's a wonderful thing, good. Let's preserve that, do a little more than just let mow the mound. I understand that, but I just don't trust that to be the case. I don't want what has happened in Murphy to happen in this town. And I'm, I'm not sure how other people feel about that. But if that was how people felt, and the majority ruled on that, well, that's fine. But I'm packing it, I'm leaving this place. I don't want it to be Cherokee, and I don't want it to be a piece of Murphy that the, the, the EBCI has now. And that's a big concern for me, and I feel again that we were too, they were too hasty to give it to a private entity such as that.
Peter, for those of us that are unaware, myself included, when you're talking about Murphy, what specifically are you talking about?
Talked about gaming, gambling. Forget about the word gaming, that's a, that's a Harrah's word. Gambling, ruining people's lives, sorry. That's how I look at it. Never put a dime in a slot machine, never will. Handed money to people for one year at the casino when I couldn't sell a shed around here and felt like I prostituted myself to do such, to make a living. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
One thing I'd like to add, this did not follow the proper protocol either of being, being vetted by our planning board. Our planning board are citizens that are appointed to do a thankless job, and they do an excellent job. They wrestle with some terrible issues and then bring it to the town council. I don't think, Mr. Moscow, that there was one word about this said to the planning board.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
So we did not follow the protocol?
I've been accused of being the, uh, uh, the person that just goes along whatever the, the town council says. That is the absolute furthest from the truth. I would, I would have died or loved to have had that put in front of us, and I would have spoke the way that we would. And I, I just don't know how the rest of my board would feel.
Thank you.
They would never let it happen, ever.
Brandon McManan says, "I would still vote in favor of the N'Kwasi initiative agreement. I still feel that we made the right decision in regard to that issue, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing the fruits of that agreement begin to develop in the future. I feel that the agreement is going to benefit the town immensely in the future, and that it was morally the right thing to do as well. The town didn't lose anything in this scenario." He's got the word "lose" capitalized. "And the mound is still very much under ironclad legal protection. I don't see any downside that we can come from the decision to share the mound with EBCI, and I'm proud that we made the decision that we made." Barbara says, "I would vote for the agreement wholeheartedly." We already read that, I'm sorry. Councilmember Culpepper says, "Yes, there is more protection for the mound than ever before. The original impetus to save the mound did not seek out the town to be the perpetual caretaker. Rather, the town was there by default. If N'Kwasi initiative had set up in 1946, there's no doubt they would have become the mound keeper." Thank you. Alright, we have the final two questions. These are questions that the, neither of the candidates here were, were prepped on. They were questions that were sent in by outside town residents.
They're sneaky questions, right?
They're not too sneaky. I don't, I don't think they're too sneaky.
I'm giving you a hard time.
The first one was, I've lost them, but I remember them. "Do you believe that Franklin would be a good host to a large-scale music, arts, and brewery festival?" Mr. Mayor?
Well, having darkened the doors of a couple of breweries in my lifetime. Oh, yes, yes, I have. However, let me say this. The, 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 the best thing is you've got to have the site for it. You cannot have a large-scale music venue unless you've got the site for it. If you've got the weight to handle it, you, you remember what happened at Woodstock? And I don't think you're talking about a Woodstock. But you have to be prepared to handle it. And if we're not handling, if we don't have a large piece of property or something like that, I think that you could have the smaller venues like our breweries do and have good entertainment such as you have here. But I think as far as something that's gonna become nationally known or something, we just don't have the place for it within the city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moscow, would you repeat that question? Do you think that, there was actually more to the question, we can come back around to it. Do you think that Franklin would play good host to, and to a large-scale music, arts, and brewery festival?
Alright, the only word in that whole question that troubles me though is "large scale", and that will obviously have to be determined, but that comes with common sense. So, and everyone who would be asking that question, I would hope would have that kind of common sense. Yes, yes, and yes, and yes.
With the proper planning?
Yes.
I understand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The last question, question number five. "Marijuana legalization in various forms is becoming part of the normal landscape of the United States. How do you feel about marijuana legalization on a federal level and why?" Mr. Moscow?
Long overdue, long overdue, years overdue. It's my opinion, and I believe that, that the federal government should get off their butts right now and let other states make money off this situation. They did with prohibition. And as far as I'm concerned, then I'm, I'm all for that. I'm all, I'm all for medical, I'm all for everything. People want to do, smoke marijuana, do whatever they want to utilize marijuana. That's, that shouldn't be my, my prerogative to, 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 to put a home on.
Mr. Mayor?
I, I can answer it with a little story. One time, I told my mother I was putting oregano in the soup. Mother's never been nicer after that soup.
Come on.
So, does that take you where I stand? As, as a law enforcement officer, as a law enforcement officer, I, I, the biggest problem we had with someone who was high on marijuana was they usually wanted to drive the patrol car to jail and be your best friend.
Well, they ate your hamburger that was half done laying on the seat.
So, does that answer my question?
Thank you very much for your honest answer today. We appreciate you coming out.
Absolutely.
Does, do you have time to take some questions from the audience?
Sure, I've got one more part before you. Yes, there's a lady back there.
This is a fellow transplant from Oregon we recently met.
Really?
Welcome, welcome aboard. I just wanna know who people are.
My name is Shawna Mar Anderson, and I'm a new homeowner in Franklin, North Carolina.
Welcome.
Moved here like a year ago, so some of the stuff, I don't even understand what y'all are talking about, trying to get up to speed.
Get you.
I'm not sure I do either.
So, just to make sure I understand, the Committee to Reelect Mayor Bob Scott is funded entirely by a $100 allowance you've been able to source it from your wife?
Uh, ma'am, actually, that's a little bit of a, of a lie.
Oh.
I've actually spent less than $400 out of my pocket. I bought two small black and white ads in the weekly newspaper. I got signs from 17 years ago that said, "Vote Bob Scott for Alderman." I cut the Alderman off and I'm sticking those old signs up that just say "Elect". And, uh, let's see, the other thing that I did, I spent a few dollars on a video that we put on Facebook, and I have used Facebook because it doesn't cost anything.
Sure, I have a couple, I have another question. Can I do another one?
Are you okay with it?
Okay, so I, my lovely grandmother is right behind me, her name's Marilyn, she also just moved from the west coast. And I love that Franklin is everything that you'd want in a small-town America. I love that it's got a lot of people that are my grandmother's age and my mom's age so that when we get out of the fires and stuff that are burning down where we come from, and there will be a community here for them. I'm having a hard time finding a community for me as a millennial, 35-year-old homeowner with, you know, designs to be a business owner. And I'm wondering what each of you might point to as your plans to attract more millennials to not just the town in general, but to civic duty and other areas of public life that we really need to step up to.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, please, Mr. Moscow, that's a great question.
I, first of all, I appreciate you, and I appreciate people of your age group because you guys are the future, man. I mean, in all, in all due respect, I, I, I have, I can't, I can't have any more respect, possibly, for, for younger people that are going to be shaping the future of Franklin. We could do anything we want, we could try to hold this place back and just make it like it was 20 years ago. It's not going that way. It's gonna be your future here. And I, I have a younger attitude on everything, and I feel that embracing change is the most important thing anybody can do. The older you get, the harder it is, it is, it truly is. On, on other levels, I'm stubborn, crazy stubborn, I catch myself. But what is it gonna take to keep you here? What's it gonna take for you to prosper here? We need infrastructure, we definitely need the internet. The next decade in this town is gonna be amazing, the changes in technology and everything else we're doing. Some of your people, older people might not agree with me on this, but we're heading towards the situation where the town's gonna have to grow on an exponential level. I mean, we've only got so much geographic area to do such, but I see so much potential in that, in that case. Small businesses, things of that nature, a little industry attracting smaller businesses, little industries that, that, that could come into our area and feed us with jobs. A lot's gonna play on the fact if we do get a, a, a real strong internet infrastructure here, that people could work from their homes, because that really is the new wave, guys, with things. And, yeah, I mean, we need that, so that you can stay here. I don't want you moving to Asheville, you look like you could. You're scared to death if you leave.
But the houses weren't better priced here.
Hey, I mean, Jim, we and Jimbo be right behind you, you know? In, no, in all due respect, I, I really do think that you guys are the future. When I, I go up to the Lazy Hiker and I see, like in the middle of the day, I see their families, their young families with their kids and their dogs, and I, you know, I, I get all choked up. I can't believe that we have that, actually have that up there. And that's because we let alcohol in this town, not that it's the wonder drug or, or the wonder cure of anything, but we relax a little, and we need to relax a little bit more, is what we need to do. And that's what's gonna keep us, that's what's gonna keep you here. But it's, it's all about the money, it's all about that monthly payment and the paychecks. So, we, what we've gotta do is make sure that people are, are starting to produce paychecks from this county even. We talk about the town, let's just talk about the county as a, as a whole. It's so interconnected, it's not even funny. And I wanna say one more thing. If I was to get on the board, I'd be very vocal at, at county, at county, with the county commissioners. I would hope that they would make me the liaison for the county. I've done that before, I could do it again. Talk with people, I, I can compromise with people, I mean, I want that, we need that, that's what we need.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Well, we're moving in the right direction. We, 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 who, who would have ever thought that there would be a brewery, brewery in the Old Town Hall? And when we renovated it, the biggest problem we had was sweeping skeletons out of the closet. We are getting there, so don't get, don't get discouraged. Rowan won't build in a day, and it took about 80, well, we once had beer years and years ago. I understand you could get it on Main Street, it was perfectly legal. Prohibition came along, now we're, we're, we're moving back in the other direction, don't get discouraged.
Okay, I'm sorry to do this, but I have one more.
Do you all, don't be sorry.
Okay, so you mentioned creating jobs and making sure that we're producing salaries here in the county. I read a news article this summer, still being new to the area and everything, about how the city manager, I believe, received a really big raise.
No, 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 no.
County?
County, please, no ma'am.
Okay, I just, it was like months ago.
Finish, finish your, finish where you go.
Well, if, if it's county and not state, then you guys don't have much say in that at all, right?
No, we have zero.
Yeah.
But you, you know how you, what we have say in? Is when we go for the next election and to revote. And I will tell everyone, I'll say it, anyone that's sitting there now, get rid of them. Get rid of them. Put some people in.
Because it seems like that could have made some more salaries instead of just one.
Well, this is what I heard, and if Ronnie Beal wants to, to say I'm wrong, he can. But what I heard was that was an executive decision done behind closed doors. Anyone does know, if you don't know, I'll tell you. Anything to do with employees and money and employees are done in an executive system. It's done behind backdoors, and that's just the way things are. Those things are not handed, handled publicly. Having said that, Ronnie decided it was a good idea to give this man another $40,000, the saving is so much money. That's like my wife telling me, "Oh, I bought these, all, all these things on sale. Look at all the money I saved." It, it just makes no sense. It didn't make any sense.
The town and county, if you don't understand, the county and county in Franklin, the county of Macon and the county of Franklin are very interconnected. The county owns various plots of land within the town, but, for example, the New Dog Park right across the street is county-owned. The, the, the gazebo on Main Street in the main downtown of Franklin is county-owned. So they are very interconnected here.
$40,000 that they gave him could go pay for all of the sidewalks going all the way down to Presley.
This is a young professional man in a, in a high, high-tier position here in the county of Macon. So it is the kind of person we say we want in those positions. If there were somebody here to defend him, they would have a good defense, I'm sure. We'll, we'll move on. Do I, do you have a closing statement? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, there's a microphone here, so of course I do. No, and one thing I wanna bring up, I'm against closed meetings. I was even singled out by a regional newspaper for fighting against so many closed meetings. The town of Franklin has virtually no closed meetings anymore. Once in a while we may. The other thing I wanna talk about is the closing of our labor and delivery unit at our hospital. I was not in favor of the sale of our hospital, Mission Hospital in Angel, to HCA, a far-profit hospital corporation. I was afraid there would be some negative things come out of it, and there have been. We have lost doctors, we have lost services. The labor and delivery is the biggest hindrance we have right now to attracting millennials who have professional predictions. Because no young family is gonna want to run, come to an area where they're not guaranteed good healthcare and labor and delivery services. I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor, is it the job of the town government to provide labor and delivery and medical to the, to the town citizens?
You want me delivering babies? No, it is not the job. It is the job of use, of hospitals that have been historically owned by the community and have been nonprofit.
We've gone a long ways from that, haven't we?
We certainly have, yes. Healthcare should be a service like government and not just for profit.
Peter, do you have anything else to say?
To just want to close some statements.
Closing point, yeah.
Well, I wanna say if, that I'm serious about what I'm doing. It's not about $3,800 extra in my pocket. It's nothing to do with that. I'm passionate about this. I've been passionate about community, being community-minded for most of my life. And I'm, I'm willing to dedicate myself to this town more than any, one of the, more than anything that I do do now. I'm semi-retired, I have a better focus, much more time to give the town and give the people. And so, my phone number and me, I'm an open book. I, I wanna hear from everybody on a daily basis. daily basis.
On behalf of Walter Frequencies, I'd like to thank you both for being here and for your very candid answers.
Appreciate it.
I thank you all who've come and attended this event, means the world to us, thank you very much. Thank you to the media.
I just wanna say my own regret is that nobody else showed up. Says a lot, sorry to say, says a lot.
Thank you, Jimbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.